Okay, we're recording.
Right. Welcome everyone and thank you so much for joining us this afternoon for an important candidate forum. We are recording this event, so it will be available to be shared with those who are unable to attend and to be shared to a larger audience. My name is Kirsten Hansen. My pronouns are she/her and I'm on the steering committee of Indivisible Kirkland. Indivisible Kirkland is a grassroots organization that developed out of the national indivisible movement following the election in 2016. Our mission promote progressive ideals in order to advance justice, equity and inclusion through civic engagement at the local and state level. I would like to acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of the Coast Salish people, including the Duamish people past and present. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duamish tribe. In order to try to fully embrace that acknowledgement, Indivisible Kirkland will be making a donation today to the Duamish tribe through Real Rent Duamish. We'll drop the link for that in the chat, so you can learn more if you're unfamiliar. And with that, I turn it over to Heather.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Heather McKnight. My pronouns are she/her. Thank you all so much for being here today. Um, thank you also to the folks who took the time to submit thoughtful questions centering affordable housing, climate, climate justice, equity and racial justice. We've done our best to incorporate the content into the questions that the moderators will pose. Um, we'd also like to thank Mark Vosler for helping us to um, secure our climate moderator. Um, and also Ron Snell from PCA Kirkland for uh, putting a shout out uh, to his folks about this event, as well as Debbie Lacy from Eastside for All for her partnership. And uh, this is the third candidate forum that Indivisible Kirkland has hosted or co-hosted since 2017, uh, featuring the KCC or Kirkland City Council and Lake Washington School Board. Since this or this year, we've added Houghton Community Council and Proposition One, which is the continuation of Houghton Municipal Corporation or HCC as it's more commonly known. All of the candidates for KCC and Lake Washington School District were invited to the forum. Um, oh my goodness, I just scrolled up. Sorry. We're invited. Um, contest or candidates for the contested position on Houghton Community Council were invited, as were representatives from the pro and con committees for Proposition One, the continuation of HCC. All KCC candidates uh, accepted for Lake Washington School Board candidates accepted with one candidate requesting an accommodation to allow for partial participation via a video statement. This request was accommodated. For HCC, one candidate accepted, we'll hear from him later. One candidate declined. For Proposition One, one committee accepted, one committee declined. And we'll hear from a representative from the committee that accepted shortly. The format will, the forum will um, consist of three parts, Lake Washington School Board, HCC and KCC. Each part will include two-minute introductions by the candidates, rounds of questions, uh, rounds of questions or questions submitted in advance by stakeholders or audience members. There may be time for follow-up questions, which you can drop into the Q and A section. We will then have a lightning round for eat for both Lake Washington School District as well as Kirkland City Council. Moderators will go over the rules, specific format and rules as we proceed. Candidates for school board are now designated as panelists. And that's why we'll be able to see them and they'll be able to speak. Once their portion is completed, they will become participants and we will promote the HCC folks to panelists and so forth. Okay, and please do bear with us as we toggle through all of the Zoom uh, links in this webinar. Uh, this is uh, it's a production and we're going to do our best. So thank you for being patient with us. Uh, let's see. And next I would like to introduce our moderators. And we are so pleased and honored, pardon me, uh, to have three incredible moderators with us this afternoon. First is Joy Randall. Joy, do you want to wave to everyone? Yay, there she is. And Joy uses the pronouns she/her or Shaw. And she's a first immigrant, first generation immigrant, immigrant born in the Philippines and she's a licensed social worker, having worked in medical and hospice social work. She's the mother of two children who attend schools in Lake Washington School District. She's the co-producer of the video Students of Color Speak Out, which led to the convening of the group Amplify Voices of Students of Color. Joy is a part of the Lake Washington School District Equity Now and Eastside Advocates. She also works with various mutual aid groups, providing support to the unhoused community, including Stop the Sweets and How's Our Neighbors. Welcome Joy and thank you for being here. Next, we have Emma Akinde, Akinde, pardon me. And Emma uses she/her pronouns and she's a junior at Eastlake High School and the president of the Black Student Union and the Student Equity Board. Emma is also a member of the community activist group LWSD Equity Now. Emma, you want to say hi to everybody? Wave your hand? Great. And then we have Francesca Lyman. Francesca uses she/her pronouns and she is an independent journalist who contributes to such local outlets as Investigate Western Seattle. She is the author of The Greenhouse Trap with World Resources Institute and is a member of the Covering Climate Now. She's a member of former environmental columnist with MSNBC and she's previously served on the board of the Finn Hill Neighborhood Alliance in Kirkland. These folks have spent so much time preparing for this event. And we honestly cannot thank them enough for working with us and taking their time to be here with all of you to ask these really thoughtful um, questions. So without further ado, I would like to hand uh, the mic over to Joy. Joy, take it away.
Thank you so much, Heather. I really appreciate it. And um, I want to also thank Indivisible Kirkland for hosting this great opportunity for us to hear our candidates, especially for these important subjects. Racial justice, climate justice, affordable housing. Really appreciate this. So um, but welcome, Lake Washington School District candidates. It's great to see you and to meet you. Um, uh, we are going to begin by giving you each two minutes to introduce yourselves. You're going to see Sarah holding up timing cards to let you know how much time you have left. And I believe you already did see Sarah hold those up. Sarah, I don't know if you want to hold those up just so that everyone can see that. So our timing is really, really tight this afternoon, as we already said. So we want to be fair to all the candidates, as well as to our audience. And we're going to be holding you to your time. Okay, I know you have a lot to say, but we're going to be holding you to your time. So um, we are going to start with the video that Cassandra Sage has sent to us and we're going to uh, follow that up with Lea Choi, then Vishal Misri and finally Mark Stewart. So uh, go ahead and start the video for Cassandra Sage, please.
Give me just one moment and I will uh, get that video rolling for us all. Okay, one moment, please. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, Heather. Heather, we can't hear it.
When you share screen, I think there may be a checkbox to also uh, share audio. You might want to try unsharing and resharing.
The joys of Zoom.
Yes, and uh, I love it. Okay, what was your suggestion again?
Unshare, unshare your screen and then reshare your screen. And there may be a checkbox that says share audio. When you start sharing, it needs to be checked. That is my best guess.
Okay, we did try this yesterday, folks.
We did.
Share sound. Thank you. Okay, here we go.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Cassandra Sage and I'm running for reelection to the Lake Washington School Board Director, Area Three. I'm sorry I can't be with you in real time today. I'm out of town on a family matter, but appreciate the opportunity to give an introduction. I'm the mother of four. I spent decades in our schools as a volunteer. I'm running for reelection to increase the mental health supports we offer our students, including diversity and hiring for mental health counselors as well as staff. In academic advancement, I expect to see advancement, not just recovery, but we need to use multi-tiered systems of support to create scaffolding that's specific for each student to help them succeed. We have a new policy, anti-racism, anti-discrimination, equity and inclusion in education. And to that end, I want to see a student advisory board that helps inform the Board of Directors in real time what their lived experience is. Last eighteen months, I've worked on Spanish language video newsletters to help our Latinx communities understand the education system as well as supports around public health. Finally, threats. The last eighteen months, the school board and staff have received threats of all sorts of kinds. Threats to do us harm, threats of lawsuits because we're violating people's civil rights. We're being told that the blood of children is on our hands. The list goes on. I would gladly do this another four years despite it all. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Next, we're going to have Lea Choi and you have two minutes, Lea. You can start now.
Thank you for inviting me to speak with you all tonight. My name is Lea Choi and I'm running for Lake Washington School Board District Director, Position Three. Uh, because I'm passionate about education and what an excellent education can really provide for future success. I've got two young children who will be entering the school district and I recognize that although we have an award-winning public school district, there are clear and persistent gaps that need to be addressed. The most pressing concerns that I see for our students in our community that I would like to see become priorities are a comprehensive crisis management plan addressing the impacts of school closures during the current pandemic, focusing not only on academic achievement, but the social emotional toll the past two years has had on our communities. We need to continue to grow and enhance opportunities for students who may choose non-traditional secondary education because not everyone learns the same way or has the same goals. Climate change disproportionately impacts the BIPOC community and communities with the least amount of wealth and comprehensive climate change curriculum needs to become a priority for all K through twelve classrooms. Finally, overwhelming evidence supports delaying school start times for adolescents and we need to overcome the obstacles that prevented this shift in the past. I have degrees in molecular biology and chemistry and was a PhD candidate for biochemistry. My work experience as a financial planner and my lived experience as a mother and member of the BIPOC community gives me a unique perspective, one that is currently missing from the board. Thank you for your time tonight and this uh, this opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much, Lea. Next, we're going to hear from Vishal Misri. You have two minutes, Vishal. You can start now.
Thank, uh, thank you. My name is Vishal Misri and I've been a resident of Redmond for the past twelve years. This is a city we call home. It is here that my wife and I started a technology company ten years ago that is, that she's still running. I'm proud father of twins who attend Emily Dickinson School in Redmond. I'm a PTA member and currently I work at Amazon. My first engagement with Lake Washington LWSD occurred last year when my children began school in the midst of pandemic, which was a difficult experience for, for all of us in terms of maintaining, first maintaining our professional lives. Uh, second, keeping our family safe. And third, introducing our children to schooling for the first time and that traditionally. As for my personal experience, one of my child was able to cope with additional learning while the other fell behind because he did not feel heard, which had an influence not all, not only on his reading skills, but also emotionally on his ability to make friends, with which he struggles even today. So I started digging deeper into the LWSD and discovered that none of the current school board members have a child in either elementary or middle schools, implying that parents in forty-six of fifty-seven schools within the LWSD have no representation in schools top decision-making body. I think we are at a point in time where we require new leadership that is representative of student body, which is almost sixty percent diverse and that diversity is not reflected on the school board. Also, the leadership needs to understand the challenges faced by the families and is willing to roll up their sleeves and do the hard work required so that we can meet each child at their individual level. This is why I'm running for the school board and my priorities will be equity and inclusion, mental wellness, teacher support and school infrastructure. I will draw on my background to bring fresh energy, responsible fiscal management and innovation to the LWSD. As a parent, um, uh, I will be accessible and transparent voice for students, families and educators and will seek out unheard students and parents. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Vishal. Um, finally, we'll have Mark Stewart. You have two minutes. Mark, can you hear us?
Well, these days I'm going to perfect that. I swear to God. Um, my name again is Mark Stewart. I'm running for reelection to District Four's uh, position. One of the things I learned from my boys first started school was I didn't know what I didn't know. And over the years, I have become the advocate really for this, for the um, the special needs parents and families who need an advocate in our system. As a parent of a son with autism, I learned what it was like to go up against the district, go up against administration and help him help himself. Uh, we, we learned firsthand walking the uh, the hallways of each school that we went to because my son had a service dog and we were the service dog handlers. And we saw day in, day out, five days a week, the good things about our district and the not-so-good things. And in fact, some of the bad things. We found that there are a lot of great teachers, a lot of great paras and staff that can't be equal. What I want to continue to do with uh, for LWSD is advocate for those who can't advocate for themselves. And it's not a week goes by that I don't get a parent calling me or emailing me for assistance or advice on how to approach this problem. Uh, I have been working to try and get our district's staff to actually communicate in a manner that goes beyond an email at four-thirty on a Friday afternoon, which is terrible. I have also um, fought the fight for all of our kids who need to have special attention and have uh, a better understanding of what they're going through. I think that uh, we have a district that performed very, very well for the top students. I want to see that for all students. To that end, I'm running for reelection with school board. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mark, and great to hear from all of you. I'm going to now pass this to um, Emma, our moderator, to talk about the question round. Emma?
So now we are going to begin the question round. There will be four rounds, each with one question. I will ask the question and each candidate will get one minute to respond to the exact same question. Between rounds, we will rotate who goes first through alphabetical order. I will pass it off to Joy so she can ask the first question.
Okay, so for this first question, we're going to start with uh, Lea Choi, followed by Vishal Misri and then Mark Stewart. Here's the question. Several polls this year have suggested that about three to four percent of Generation Z identify as transgender or non-binary. That would translate to roughly one trans or non-binary student in every classroom. What changes do you think LWSD should make to accommodate this unprecedented degree of gender diversity in our student population? Lea, please uh, begin and you have one minute.
Well, first and foremost, uh, I think that the equity policy that the board passed is a great first step towards a comprehensive um, plan that the, that the board can uh, work off of. It took way too long. It's unacceptable for any district to take upwards of five years to come up with an equity policy. And that includes, you know, all students. That policy is inclusive of all students. And I think the most important thing that we should do is to get together focus groups with those students that are directly impacted, the ones that don't feel like they are part of the community, the ones that don't feel safe, the ones that don't feel heard and hear from them what it is that they want to see within their schools and how they want to see change implemented so that they can feel like they are part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lea. Next, uh, Vishal.
Yeah, I thank you for the question. Uh, we are blessed to live in a district which has almost hundred and twenty-seven, twenty languages spoken. Uh, that's a rich diversity of people, uh, whether it's culture, ethnicity, and now you mentioned about trans folks as well. I think the first part of it is, the first thing that I would like to do is ensure that we have training around unconscious bias. Right? All of us have biases that we're not aware of it. And with the diversity of people uh, that we have, that training needs to happen as part of the curriculum, uh, whether we are at the teacher level or at the student level. Because uh, once we know the biases and you know, and the communication comes up open, then we can know what the concerns are, what the fears are. So having everyone's fears out in the open, being able to articulate other person to everybody else, what you like, what you don't like, what you feel offensive about. And that's a culture of open communication that we need to ensure and endeavor in the district. That is what I will do. And a very tactical thing to drive, uh, make people feel comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you, Vishal. Next, Mark, you have one minute.
For the last eight years, I've been one of the advocates for diversity and inclusion, without question. Uh, the inclusion of all students in a classroom. One of the classes that my younger son, who has autism, attended was the certification for uh, response training, uh, the emergency training class. And the place that helped him the most in that class, one was a young man who struggled with coming out and actually tried to commit suicide. And the other young man was a young man who couldn't be himself at home because he was born a girl. Those two kids helped my son uh, be included in every aspect of that class. I told both of them, if there's everything I can do, you call me. We can help. In fact, the one young man, uh, what, uh, the trans young man chose to be my son's peer tutor the next year. I welcome all kids, whatever new help they need. And I've worked on mental health, uh, increasing mental health.
Conclusion. Are you done, Mark?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I ended when you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Okay. Emma?
So now it is time for question two. Um, for the second question, we will start with Vishal answering first, followed by Mark Stewart and then Lea Choi. Here is the second question. Our district has armed police officers, uh, commonly known as SROs at each middle school and high school. Each SRO turns in monthly reports detailing their time spent and student interactions. Looking through the SRO's reports, we see the vast amount of their time is spent on standard discipline issues, counseling students, including potentially suicidal students, and teaching health, civics and government classes. What makes an armed school police officer qualified to fulfill these duties instead of a school counselor, nurse or social worker? Vishal, the floor is yours. Your one minute begins now.
Yeah. So if you look into it, there's a bigger problem. The problem is sixty percent of jails across the nation are filled with people of color. Right? And uh, having SRO is a part of the problem in terms of school-to-prison pipeline. So we need to be mindful of it. Now, the overall question is having an open and a safe and welcoming environment and there are multiple components of it. Uh, SRO is one part of it, having behavior or mental health resources and counselor could be a second part of it. I do not believe that having an armed police officer uh, in the school uh, is a part of the complete solution. Maybe we need to look at other solutions where we have unarmed officers, maybe plainclothes, behavior and mental counselors uh, who can help and provide the level of stability and security. So personally, I'm of the view that having um, counselors will be of more impact uh, for the students than having uh, shore force at schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Vishal. Mark Stewart, your one minute begins now.
Several police departments around the country, including our own here locally, have been increasing the numbers of mental health counselor, um, advisors, uh, social workers, uh, to deal with people having mental health problems on the street. I think this is a role uh, that they should fill with also a similar person as an SRO, as opposed to a police officer. I know the response was uh, due to the, the school shootings and I know that people are still worried about that. But I think that we can uh, have increased patrols around the neighborhoods. I also think that since in the last six years, eight years, we've increased the video surveillance in our uh, schools to ensure the safety of our students. I want to see, one of the things I've been pushing for was increased uh, emotional health counseling and mental health counseling. And if that can include the person who was an SRO and will now be a social worker, great. Because we can't afford it all at all times, but we ought to find ways to afford it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark Stewart. Lea Choi, you have one minute.
Um, before I start, there is a request in the Q and A for closed captioning. I didn't know if you were able to do that. I just wanted to point it out. Okay, um, so first of all, I appreciate where the idea of SROs in schools came from. Uh, when I was a student in Denver, Colorado, where I grew up, um, I was in school when the Columbine shootings happened and it happened very near to me. I was locked down and it was a terrifying experience, the chaos that it caused in our community. As a response, we had SROs appear at our schools. Um, and I understand the logic of wanting police at schools for safety, especially during such a chaotic time. But times have really changed and marginalized students tend to have more negative interactions with uniformed officers within the community. And when they're asked to attend school with one walking around campus, it can be a significant deterrent for them to want to go to school. And it can even cause high levels of anxiety and fear. We need to reexamine our options, creating a safer campus, explore different opportunities and speak with our students and our families about what would make them feel safe.
Thank you, Lea. We will now move on to question three.
Okay, here is question three. We'll start first with Mark, then Lea and then uh, Vishal. In the last few months, LWSD has seen a black principal and black equity director resign. Why do you think it is so challenging for our district to attract and retain BIPOC teachers and administrators? What changes do you think would help? Mark, you can start. Your minute begins now.
I worked from the get-go with Gloria Henderson, our uh, equity director. I told her that I wanted to be the person to help her achieve her goals. There wasn't anyone who was more disappointed when Gloria told me she was leaving. But to be quite frank, I don't think there was anyone more, uh, less surprised because it really was her career path. That said, uh, in her absence, Gloria has endorsed me. And I think we need to work harder with our uh, our current teaching, teaching staff to reach out to their uh, their, their own alma maters. Say, hey, we need more BIPOC teachers. Help us. What are the, uh, how can we recruit? And in retaining, we also have to give those individuals, as we should give all individuals in our school, in our, helping our schools, the support they need. If they don't get the support, they're not going to want to stay. It's unfortunate. And I believe that we need to have a more equitable system for all.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, you're up next, Lea. You have one minute.
Uh, students and families have made it very clear that our schools can be more inclusive places, ones that foster an environment where everyone feels safe and welcome. And that really starts at the top. And it's why it's of the utmost importance that equity work get completed in a timely fashion. It really shows the community, the teachers, the families, what are priorities within our district. It really shows the community, the teachers, the families, what are priorities within our district. Any delay is going to send the wrong message. So that's why there needs to be such a sense of urgency moving forward. There needs to be a conscious effort of analyzing past and future policies through an equity lens so that we can get the policies right and show that we mean we are going to be equitable and supportive of everyone within our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lea. Vishal, you're up next. You have one minute.
Can we start again now? Okay. All right, I'll get started. It's no surprise that our schools are struggling with equity as our leadership of schools reflects none of the diversity of a very diverse district. And and it is a systemic problem, right? And if you look at the OE10 report that came out in August 9, 60% of even the students do not feel a sense of belonging to the school. So there's a failure at the level of leadership in terms of implementing policies that are equitable where not only the students and the teachers feel safe. So what will I do? I will encourage the district to not only to hire BIPOC teachers, but create an environment, create an environment and have policies in place where they can be retained. Because it's it's easier to retain an employee than to and then to find a new employee. And that relate and that ties down to understanding what their pain points are, what makes them comfortable, what makes them uncomfortable. And they should be able to live in the societies that they serve in. So having a strong policy to hire BIPOC staff and retain them will be key focus area of mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Vishal. Next, Emma will take question four.
Yeah, so for question four, we will start with Leah Choi answering first, followed by Vishal Misri, and then Mark Stewart. So here's question four. LWSD's student body is majority BIPOC, but the teaching staff, counselors, and other administration are overwhelmingly white. What are the impacts of that on these students who do not see themselves reflected in the staff they see each day? What could the school district be doing to make sure the teachers and staff have the culturally responsive skills that they need? Leah Choi, you have one minute.
Okay, so this is actually very near and dear to my heart. Growing up, I grew up in a very, very suburban town where I was the diversity at my school. It was just me, and I didn't realize the impact that had on my psyche and what kind of person I turned out to be. Because as I got older, I rejected my own culture. I didn't want to learn Korean. I didn't want to be associated with the Asian crew ever because they were the other. There was nobody like me around me. So it was it was very impactful. And I think that people overlook how important it is to have role models that look like you and sound like you around you when you're growing up. And there that is just so important, and it can't be overlooked in any way. If we can't find the educators, then we need to find counselors. We need to have parent volunteers just present so that they can be positive role models for all students. Thank you.
Thank you, Lea. Vishal, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Base data has shown us that students are more successful when they see people like themselves, teachers, sports staff, educators, administrators like like them. So there's a problem that exists. So what will I do? First is a tactical short-term step, and either would be a midterm step. A short-term step will be, let's do a communication audit, figure out what are the gaps are. That's what we heard from the Latina community. The challenge is the communication between the students, between the between the schools, and the community is lacking. We need to improve and improvise that. That is the immediate step that can be involved, and that will drive higher parent engagement. So till the time we are able to have the staff, we can have the parents involved. And second step would be, intermediate level will be to hire more BIPOC staff, whether it's teachers, administrators, or sports staff, and have policies to retain them. So these are two things that I will do to ensure that kids feel safe and we have more BIPOC community at the school level. Thank you.
Thank you, Vishal. Mark, it's your turn.
I'm always disappointed when I see one of our BIPOC teachers or administrators leave, and I always try to find out what drove you away. Why didn't you feel comfortable? Was it a better opportunity, or was it just you couldn't do this anymore? And sadly, it's often that latter. I've been encouraging staff who do the hiring to be more outgoing in their and proactive in their outgoing to recruit BIPOC student or teachers and administrators, as well as counselors, especially the counselors. One of the problems that the it when high, when Anita High School, they have LGBTQIA+ club. But they have no counselors who have, as when I met with them, they were saying, I can't go to a counselor with these problems. They don't understand what I do. Thank goodness, I've got a, one of my sponsors in my club, they're all from that community. And I think we need to increase our recruitment. We need to look at why we don't retain them and do better.
Thank you all for your insightful answers to these questions. Now we have some time for follow-up. So you will each get one minute. If you felt that you didn't get to fully answer a question from before, or if you have something that you'd like to share, this one minute would be a good time. So we'll start with Vishal. Then we will follow that up with Mark and then finally Leah.
Emma, can I say, I kind of do have a follow-up question, and maybe all three of them can can answer. I think maybe there is just a little bit of not much clarity in the last question. I think what people want to ask is, right now, we have majority white staff as far as teachers, as far as counselors, as far as administrators. And things to do to change that is going to take years. What can we do now to train the majority white staff in order to be more culturally responsive, to really be able to address the needs of the 60% BIPOC students that we have now? So I, if if each of you could maybe answer that, that would be great.
So I can go first if you like. As I shared in my response, one was a short-term step, other was intermediate. The short-term step comes around with communication. Half the battle is about communication. We heard the Latina community last week that the biggest challenge and the frustration with the school district is that the that the communication with the parent, between the parents and the school district is not in a language that they understand. So one thing which I will do is encourage the hiring of cultural ambassadors, so to speak, that are representative of each of the BIPOC communities. Because these become become the ambassadors that can reach out, that can communicate more effectively to the communities. That is the immediate short-term step that can be done. This could be volunteers or paid. But this will be the easiest step till the time the hiring of BIPOC staff takes in place. So that is what I would suggest the district do in a short-term basis.
Thank you, Vishal. Mark or Lea?
Sure. Go ahead, Lea.
You can go ahead, Mark. I'll go last.
I'm sorry. I didn't want to be rude and jump in. With the passage of our, finally, the passage of our equity policy, one of the big things we had for staff was to undergo ongoing, not just occasional, equity training to learn what they don't know, what they don't understand perhaps, nuances of what, how they might teach, how they might ask questions, and what impact that has on students and how the students are responding or accepting the information they're being given. There is no way you can do, you can actually step into another person's shoes. What you have to do, though, is get have increased sensitivity training towards those ends. The board has undergone a long process of equity training. I myself came from the wrong side of the tracks, first person in my family to go to college, and I can identify with the issue of feeling left out. And I think that what we need is the continued education of our staff on how to help children of color.
So I heard a really interesting statistic recently, and I might get the numbers slightly off, but it was something like 60 or 70% of white Americans don't have a friend that they consider to be a friend of a of the from the BIPOC community. And that statistic was pretty astonishing to me because if you don't interact with people who have lived experiences that are different from your own, then you're going to have a pretty narrow-minded view of what the world is and what their worlds are like, what their world is like and what they need. And so I agree, comprehensive training is great, and it's definitely necessary for staff. But I also think that you need to have outreach to families. You need to involve the people that are in the classroom that are different from you. Have them, give them opportunities to come and share about cultures and differences so that the kids can see what families and real-life experiences are like within their own, you know, classrooms, their friends, families, and within our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much for answering that. I believe that we are going next to the lightning round. Is that correct? We don't have any more time for follow-up questions. Okay, so the lightning round. In this round, candidates will quickly hold up yes or no signs on their screens. So do each of you have your yes or no signs? Okay. So this is going to be quick, as quick as we can. Okay, so let's go ahead and start. Are you all three ready?
Okay, of the 500 largest school districts in the country, about 14% include a student representative on the school board. Do you support expanding the board to include a student representative? Like Vishal, I'm guessing yes, your background is green. Okay, there we go. There we go. Okay. Number two, do you support removal of SROs from middle and high schools? Okay, number three, do masks help prevent the spread of COVID?
Yes.
Number four, should students be required to get the COVID vaccine once all students are eligible?
Yes.
Sorry, what did you say? Repeat that, please.
He said yes.
Okay, now that's the question.
Okay, Emma?
Number five, the use of Alice drills to rehearse a school shooting is a subject of controversy, especially in the absence of strong data about their effectiveness. Some educators think they can traumatize students while others think they're necessary. Do you support Alice drills in Lake Washington School District schools? Number six, have you voted in every election in the past five years?
Yes.
Number seven, teachers are being attacked for teaching the truth about US history that challenges and expands their students' thinking. Will you support and stand by teachers in our district to teach the truth?
Yeah.
Number eight, have you watched the LWSD BIPOC student video with the Lake students of color speak out? If you haven't, the link will be in the chat. Please feel free to watch at a later time. Number nine, do you support the implementation of composting bins in cafeterias and classrooms?
Yeah.
And finally, number 10, gas-powered cars contribute half of to half of the Kirkland community's greenhouse gas emissions each year. Idling of cars, as well as traffic condition congestion, are big problems around the city schools with long lines of parents dropping off their children, as well as all the high school students now driving. Do you feel this problem is important enough to pass policies that promote other alternatives such as bike, electric bikes, and walking to school? Awesome. Thank you for your participation. That concludes the lightning round.
Wow, that was that was a lot of information. Thank you so much to our Lake Washington School District Board candidates. Thank you for being here. Thank you for taking the time to prepare for this candidate forum. You guys all did really well. We appreciated your responses to our questions. As we've been going along, we have been popping folks' links into the chat. So I believe that Indivisible Kirkland is going to post a recap of the candidate websites in chat. So you can always find email addresses to make contact to the candidates should you have additional questions for them. And with that, our next step is going to be to remove the Lake Washington School Board candidates from, make them participants. And then we are going to promote, so to speak, Aaron Jacobson, who is running for Houghton Community Council. So if everyone could bear with us while we make this transition, that would be fantastic. And and then I will be providing a little bit of background information about Houghton Community Council. And let me just make sure, okay, I think that we're ready. And Aaron, when you're ready, if you want to turn your video on, that would be fantastic, fantastic. So just give me a moment, and I will provide the background information to everyone so they know what we're talking about. Okay, so so now we're talking, we're turning to Houghton Community Council. When Kirkland and Houghton merged in 1968, the year of my birth, the voters of Houghton also voted to establish the Houghton Community Council as the governing body within their former towns' borders. Within those borders, the HCC has authority to veto any Kirkland City Council ordinance that relates to land use or zoning, including the comprehensive plan. It also has the power to make recommendations to the Kirkland City Council and city staff on any issue, which are taken very seriously due to the potential threat of veto. And with that, I am going to hand the mic over to Joy, who will start the next program, next portion of our program. And welcome, Aaron. Thank you for being here.
Thanks so much, Heather. Okay, as Heather mentioned at the start of this, that only one seat on the Houghton Committee Council is being contested. That race is between incumbent Bill Coggins, Goggins, and challenger Aaron Jacobson. Aaron, thank you for being with us here right now. And you have two minutes to do an introduction of yourself, and we'll follow that up with a short question round. Go ahead, Aaron.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Hi, I'm Aaron Jacobson. I'm a software engineer with a degree in law, economics, and public policy, and I'm finishing a master's in data science in a few months. I'm running as the first challenger to anyone on the Houghton Community Council in 32 years because traffic, the rising cost of living, climate change, and homelessness have all gotten worse, while the community council has focused its energy on trying to stall or even prevent progress on these issues. The community council has a history of filtering out voices they disagree with while simultaneously claiming that they represent the will of the community because they say they listen. I want to bring the community together, make sure we hear from people we don't normally hear, and be an advocate for our community to create solutions for the problems we face today. When it comes to transportation, I've communicated by bike, bus, and car, so I understand what everyone on each side of the issue faces. One example of our current problems is that before I filed to run for this position, I emailed various community council members to understand how they saw the issues and what they thought could be done. My opponent never responded to that email. The one email he from me he did respond to was the one that where I told him that I filed to run against him. I'm proud to be endorsed by State Representative and Houghton resident Amy Wallen, State Representative Fonda Slatter, State Senator Patty Kutter, former Transportation Commissioner Brad Haverstein, former Planning Commissioner Karen Tennyson, and current East Bellevue Community Council member Steve Kastner. Thank you for hosting this candidate forum, and I hope this can be a productive conversation about how we can solve the issues in our community.
Thanks so much, Aaron. Really appreciate that. The question for you right now is, what is your vision for the Houghton Community Council? And you will have one minute to respond to that.
So there are essentially two ways in which the Houghton Community Council, as was discussed before, can it can make change in our community, through the threat of a veto or by proactively engaging with the city council. And if elected, I want to use my position on the community council to work with city council members to solve the problems that we're facing today and try and resolve the disagreements that we have before before it comes to a question of whether we're going to veto it or not. We have a lot of issues where they have an attack, they have a component that is related to zoning, and so the community council has a say there, but that but are fundamentally spending issues. Like, for example, the the question about whether kids can go to, can bike to school. But a big part of that is whether the land use rules even allow for enough bike parking or allow for enough space. And additionally, we can use transportation impact fees generated from new development, which zoning regulates, to create to create revenue to pay for bike infrastructure.
Thank you so much, Aaron, for explaining all that. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Erin, for, um, explaining all that. We really appreciate it. We are going to be now shifting to, um, the next portion of the Houghton Community Council. And as we've already learned that this year, the continued existence of the Houghton Community Council is on the ballot for Houghton residents in Kirkland. So this vote occurs every four years. Both committees, the one in favor of keeping the Houghton Community Council and the one in favor of discontinuing the HCC, were invited this afternoon. Jenny Ager, a member of the Vote No Committee or Con Committee, has joined us this afternoon. And she will have two minutes to read a statement from the Vote No Committee, followed by a brief question round. Jenny Ager, you have two minutes.
Hello. The Houghton Community Council fulfilled its intended purpose of easing the transition of the Houghton-Kirkland merger. That merger happened in nineteen sixty-eight. After fifty-three years, it's time for the HCC to go. The HCC is an expensive, undemocratic layer of bureaucracy that provides no services. Its only power is to obstruct. The HCC has a power to veto land use regulations and zoning within its boundaries. No other neighborhood in Kirkland has this power. With its veto power, the HCC essentially pushes densification and needed services into other Kirkland neighborhoods, which have no such veto power. A few things that the HCC has obstructed in recent years are solar panels, affordable housing, accessory dwelling units, sometimes known as mother-in-law units, protection for landmark trees, lighted tennis courts and sports fields that would have been available to the public. And most of all, they've obstructed efficiency in government. The cost is paid by all Kirklanders. Although the HCC coun- council members are volunteers, city staff manages the endless meetings and negotiations between the city and the HCC, costing Kirkland taxpayers an estimated eighty-eight thousand dollars to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year in staff time. If you believe in a comprehensive vision for Kirkland, if you believe every voter in every neighborhood should have equal weight, if you value fairness, equity, and efficiency, then you must vote no on continuing the HCC. Vote no on Prop One.
Thank you, Jenny. So, uh, for the question, I guess really for you to have more time to expand on this, how will Kirkland be better without the Houghton Community Council? If you can expand?
Well. Kirkland strives to be a welcoming, inclusive, equitable community. But the special veto power of the HCC does not fit with these goals. The HCC represents at most ten percent of Kirklanders, and yet it has hugely disproportionate power and influence with the city. No one Kirkland, uh, no one neighborhood in Kirkland should have disproportionate power. Every Kirklander should have an equal say in the future of their community. This is the heart of democracy. If we are truly committed to Kirkland's equity goals, we must abolish the HCC. Vote no on Prop One. And for more information, uh, please see our website, hcc-con.com. Doesn't work either, does it?
Nope, that's right. We could see it. Yeah, and it's also dropped in the chat, I believe. So thank you, Jenny. Appreciate it. Okay, I'm gonna pass it to Heather now to transition us to the next segment.
Okay, great. Hey, everybody, I really want to thank, uh, Erin and Jenny for so graciously being here today with us. We really appreciate them, uh, taking the time to both run for office, an office to, or an office that has not had a, um, contender in many, many years. And also, uh, for Jenny, uh, speaking on behalf of, um, the Con Committee or the Vote No Committee, uh, we really appreciate both of you being here and sharing this really important information on how, uh, Kirkland would be, could be better without the HCC. Um, and so now we are going to transition to the Kirkland City Council portion of our program. And so now we're going to, oh, yes, people are being promoted as I speak. And, uh, let's see, I, if, once we have everyone on board, then I'm going to hand it over, hand the mic over to Francesca Lyman, who will, uh, uh, bring us into this, uh, next section of our forum. So, and with that, uh, Francesca Lyman, would you like to take over from me?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Heather, and welcome Kirkland City Council candidates. Um, so happy to have you here. As we've done in the previous two sections, we will start this part of the forum by allowing each of our six city council candidates, uh, two minutes to introduce themselves. And we will do this in alphabetical order. So please, up next is Jay Arnold. Two minutes.
Thank you. I'm Jay Arnold. I'm running for reelection to Kirkland City Council position number one. With the support of my colleagues, I serve currently as deputy mayor. My pronouns are he/him. My story of getting involved in Kirkland began thirty-one years ago. I had an apartment in Totum Lake. Uh, I sometimes would work, uh, bike to work down the Savannah Trail to Microsoft. I love the parks, downtown waterfront, the neighborhoods, the community. And I thought that zombie mall nearby really had the potential to be something someday. As Kirkland has grown up, we've been successful and preserved what's special about the community through visionary planning, wise investments, and through patience and persistence, and most importantly, with the engagement and involvement of the community. I also got involved locally. I served on nonprofit boards, working on smart growth and transportation, and developing community renewable energy. I was appointed to the Kirkland Planning Commission. I co-chaired the campaign for the Parks Levy that secured permanent dedicated funding for Kirkland Parks. I ran for Kirkland City Council in twenty, um, thirteen, fourteen, uh, twenty thirteen. Uh, my wife, Mary Beth, and I lived in Norcirk neighborhood. We have one daughter in high school and two daughters in college. As these things go, uh, our daughters in college have ventured out of state. As they look toward their careers and dreams, I want a Kirkland that they have the opportunity to come back to. I want a Kirkland that can be a home to people in all ages and stages in life. And we have much more work to do for that next generation, for Kirkland's future. I'm passionate about a sustainable, diverse Kirkland where all belong. We've adopted ambitious plans charting our part, our path forward, but the policy work ahead is crucial. I look forward to talking more about those important issues facing the community today and hope to have your support in November to continue this work. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jay, um, for keeping on track. We don't have Academy Award music to come in, but you can see, you can see the sign, the timekeeper. So, uh, you're next, Neil Black. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Francesca, and thanks, everyone, for being here. My name's Neil Black. Uh, my pronouns are he/him. Um, I, uh, really honored, uh, to serve the people of the city Kirkland. Uh, you elected me in two thousand nineteen. I'm running for reelection for position five, uh, now in two thousand twenty-one. I'm running to ensure that our council continues to be committed to thoughtful, service-oriented decision-making. Part of that is being prepared. Uh, part of that's coming prepared. But another big part of that is, um, is continuing to consider, the, the impact of council decisions on those we hear from regularly, uh, but also those who we hear from rarely. So I'm thinking of many people who we, whose voices we have difficulty hearing regularly, but we have got to look out for their interests as well as everyone else's. Those, that includes many of our young people, uh, many of our young families, uh, low and moderate income families. Kirkland's workforce, which helps make, uh, sort of, sort of helps create the fabric of our community, uh, tenants in Kirkland's many multifamily housing units, uh, members of our BIPOC community, uh, those who suffer from mental health issues, uh, struggle with addiction or, uh, encountering homelessness and more. Um, my, my wife and I moved to Kirkland, uh, the same month we were married. Uh, that was twenty-three years ago. We moved into an apartment, uh, in the Lakeview neighborhood. I'm a lawyer, and I've worked on law and policy issues for now nearly thirty years. I've been a legal intern at the Environmental Defense Fund. I've been an intern in the White House Office on Environmental Policy. I've been a law clerk at the Department of Justice Environmental Defense Section. Uh, I'm a former member of the Board of Trustees of Washington Ceasefire, uh, working to reduce gun violence in our communities. And I'm a member of the Board of Trustees of the King County Bar Association, which oversees the Housing Justice Project and works on equal access to justice. I would love to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Appreciate it. Uh, up next, we have Sharice Burgoyne. You have the floor.
Thank you. Hello and good evening. I'm Sharice Burgoyne, and I am a lifelong resident of Kirkland, and I am running for city council because as a nineteen-year business owner in the downtown core, I have noticed a lot of change, as we all have. One of the things that I notice in consistency is the power of ordinary people like you and me getting together and doing great things for our community. And I want to help usher in a new chapter for Kirkland going forward, coming out of this COVID bubble that we've all been in. And as a sitting board member of the Chamber of Commerce, I have the pleasure to meet with new and existing business owners. And I hear their want of representation and the communication that could happen, that isn't happening. And I want to be that voice for our small business community. And you know, I just think that in Kirkland, we have great opportunity to include and to use the tech that is around to help really spread the information of what's happening in our area for all different individuals. And I want to be that voice for you. As a vote for me would be a seat at the table for a small business leader, a young woman who is developing within her community and wants to be part of your voice to action. Thank you for your vote. I'm Sharice Burgoyne.
Thank you, Sharice. Uh, next we have Matthew Gelsor. Is Matthew here?
I am.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon. Um, and thank you. Kirkland's a great city. We love calling it home. That's why we're all here today. Our community is inviting you more. Our prosperity is truly enviable. With that, we are seeing tremendous growth pressure on our roads, schools, housing, parks, and tree canopy. The decisions we make today are critical to the future of our community. Now is our opportunity to set strategic vision for Kirkland's future. I am up to that challenge. I have a different perspective than my opponent that makes me the right choice for Kirkland. My niece and met nephew faced Asian hate throughout twenty-twenty. I know kids who are kicked out of their homes for being non-gender conforming and who have faced addiction and self-harm at ages that they should only enjoy. I have family that has faced homelessness and struggled with housing insecurity. These are real issues facing our community. By electing me, you will gain a voice and an advocate that will elevate social justice as a top priority for Kirkland. Our prosperity is having dramatic impacts on housing affordability and socioeconomic diversity needed to make Kirkland a complete community. We need to look at housing and transit hand in hand. We also need real discussions around working class job displacement. We will be challenged with how to manage growth in a way that protects our natural resources while allowing for densification and strengthening of our neighborhood character and diversity. We have a huge opportunity in the next four years to reset Kirkland's comprehensive plan with bold visioning to create a city in twenty fifty that is warm, welcoming, diverse, and prosperous. It will feel like the home we love, but will have risen to the challenges in front of us related to housing affordability, economic displacement, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. It will be a city that is green and healthy with unparalleled parks, schools, and services. By electing me, you will gain a leader who listens and a partner who will advocate for our unique and diverse neighborhoods. Kirkland will gain from my twenty-five years of design, leadership, and planning experience. Through strong leadership and strategic planning, we shape our future together. Thank you for your time today. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Matt, Matthew. Uh, next up, John Pascal. You have the floor. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. It's been a real honor to serve everyone these past four years on city council. And just a little bit about me for those that don't know me. I'm a part owner of a small business in Kirkland called The Transport Group. I'm a licensed civil engineer with a focus on transportation, and I live in the wanting to neighborhood with my family. I'm seeking reelection because I want to continue to, continue to assist in the recovery from the pandemic, continue to address the challenges that come with growth, and help make the community stronger, safer, and more welcoming for everyone. And we've done a lot over the last four years. We've made significant progress um, and investments in our public safety services. We've invested in key transportation projects. We've expanded our park system. And while we're doing that, we, we increase support for human services partners um, and updated regulations to make it easier to build a range of affordable housing options. And many of these things we did during the pandemic. Yet there are so many other issues that we need to address, and I want to be part of that. For example, we need to continue to advance transportation solutions. We need to continue to work with our parks, in particular, our active features, such as inclusive playgrounds, all season fields, and dog parks. And we need, need to continue to assist those that are struggling from homelessness, mental health, and other issues in our community. And Kirkland really is an amazing community. I, I want to continue working with all of you to maintain that charm and livability, everything that we love. You can find out more about me on my website there. Um, I get that wrong every time, right there. Uh, thank you. Uh, pleasure to be here.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. And, uh, next we have Penny Sweet. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am Penny Sweet, and this is my third year as mayor and my twelfth on the Kirkland City Council. When my husband Larry Springer and I started our store, The Grape Choice, almost forty years ago, and joined the Kirkland Business Community, we jumped in with both feet. If we were gonna live here and work here, we were gonna make a difference. We joined the chamber. We joined the new, brand-new Downtown Association. We served on committees. We joined service clubs, served on boards, assisted with events, and helped create new events. And in that process, we basically began, began our lifelong love affair with Kirkland. I'm incredibly proud of the work that this council has done and continues to do. We are seen throughout the region as a city with a council that is leading the county in many important areas. My personal passions are well represented in our annual goals and work plans. Housing affordability and the development of workforce housing is my number one priority. With regard to public safety, I chaired the Committees for Prop One for Police in two thousand seventeen and Prop One for Fire in two thousand nineteen. Both passed. I am absolutely committed to taking every step available to us in addressing climate change and protecting our environment, as is so eloquently stated in our Sustainability Master Plan. The issue of equity and inclusion, particularly for our BIPOC community members, has risen as a critical priority since two thousand sixteen. And I'm looking forward to the upcoming results of our citywide equity assessment and moving ahead with changes to level the playing field for all of us. Finally, a hallmark of Kirkland's success is our financial stability, which reflects the sound decision-making around our budget every year I have served. As a city, we have one of the highest credit ratings in the state, saving our citizens millions of dollars annually. Please consider lending me your vote next month as we reach out. And reach, feel free to reach out to me if you have any particular issues or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sweet. Appreciate it. Thanks to all of you for your wonderful statements. So now, moving on to our questions. Uh, since we have more candidates in this race, we're gonna handle the questions a little bit differently. We've paired the candidates, um, up uh, with two sets of opposing candidates together, and then pairing unopposed incumbents. So we'll have Jay Arnold and John Pascal to, together. And there will be three rounds of questions, and each pair will answer the same question, and each person will have a minute to answer the question. We will also alternate who goes first in each pair, starting in alphabetical order. And for the final round, we tossed a coin to determine the order. So, um, starting with question one, uh, Jay Arnold, will you please follow, will you please start off and then be followed by John Pascal? So for question one, we have, uh, the city of Kirkland has a detailed sustainability master plan with pledges to reduce- with pledges to reduce car travel, retrofit buildings, and create ten-minute neighborhoods to foster walkability. Yet, to date, has there been any specific funding or staffing allocated toward this plan? How do you propose carrying out this ambitious master plan? And what do you think is most urgent? Uh please answer, Jay Arnold. You have one minute.
Thank you. Uh I was proud to champion Kirkland's visionary Sustainable Master Plan, which sets out an ambitious work plan over the next three years. Um and you've mentioned several of the things on there that we need to do to reduce greenhouse gases, expand access to transit, uh strengthen building requirements, et cetera. All of these things will come together right now in our eighty-fifth station area plan. We have a significant opportunity in that plan for building workforce and affordable housing near transit, setting net zero building standards, and requiring developer contributions to fund parks and transportation infrastructure. This can reduce the greenhouse gas footprint for a household living in the station area by eighty percent or more. And in many ways, that eighty-fifth street discussion will be a preview for uh work that needs to happen across the city with the update of our comprehensive plan that gets to the issues that you talk about around uh retrofitting, around um uh what we do citywide. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jay Arnold. Uh John Pascal, and uh the question also um was had to do with specific funding for staffing and allocated uh for this ambitious plan. Thank you. Please, you have one minute.
Great, thank you. Well, the beauty about the Sustainability Master Plan is that many of the things we're already doing and we're already staffing throughout our departments. Um the master plan, though, brings everything together and focuses on what our key priorities are as a city. And I agree that uh one of the things that we do need to really think about is how do we um provide that the staffing, the resources to to take action on many of the big things. And it really comes down to three areas that are of the biggest significance that are going to have the most difference. And it's really about that land use, building regulations, many of which we've already incorporated, but we have some some that we can that are still outstanding that we can tackle as part of the comprehensive plan update. There's energy clean clean energy goals that we will be working with with Puget Sound Energy. And then there's transportation. We have a lot of significant things that we have to continue to do there, whether it's electric vehicles, um whether it's working with our transit providers in King County Metro to to elevate uh increased transit service and and reduce reliance on the automobile. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So now we're going to move on to another question. Uh this would be question two, and Matthew Gelsor will answer first, followed by Penny Sweet. So for question two, the biggest share of Kirkland's carbon emissions, a full fifty percent, comes from gas-powered cars. So reducing vehicle miles is critical to solving this problem. Also, the average commute for Kirkland residents is longer than the national average, and nearly seventy percent of people drive their own car alone. So what specific policies would you have to get Kirkland residents out of their cars? Matthew Gelsor, please. You have a minute.
Thank you. So I actually have chosen to be a transit rider. I take the two fifty-five into Seattle every day for work. Um that comes with a huge cost to my family. Currently, it can take between an hour and fifteen to an hour and a half to get from Kirkland to downtown or back, depending on um how the sequence of buses and and trains happen. So you know, we really need to, as a city, work closely with metro to pay for and fund transport ahead of ridership. We have a huge issue in that uh the east side is looked at differently. We're looked at as um we don't need that from an equity standpoint. We get deprioritized by metro uh because they see east siders as not needing transit. They also look at east side as um not having ridership, therefore not not being required to to provide service. So a a core piece I would look at is how do we partner with metro and how do we fund transit ahead of ridership? Thank you.
Thanks so much. Thank you. Uh Penny Sweet, you're next, and you have one minute. The same question about Kirkland's carbon emissions. Uh you you're muted. Uh you're muted. We can't hear you.
I know I can unmute. All right. Are we are we here now? Sorry about that. The button went. Um, okay, in terms of our carbon, one of the things that we are doing as a city is we're doing electrification of all the all of our vehicles that the city uses. But Matt's right, uh we need to work very hard with uh the transit agencies, with metro and sound transit. Uh one of the things that's going to work for us very well will be the Bus Rapid Transit Station when it is in place. I too am a two fifty-five rider and have been for years. Um we need to maintain high levels of service with the two fifty-five. We need to work with Sound Transit on making the transition so that people can get into Seattle more more quickly and more without the hassle of the big transfer at the University of Washington. Um and we need to continue to work in the development of TODs across the city. Um and a couple of those that we can work on are Kings Gate and also potentially uh at the Houghton Park and Ride.
Okay. Thanks so much. Appreciate it. All right. So now we're going to move on to the next question. For this one, Neil Black will answer first, followed by Charisse Burgoyne. Um so on this question, it will be um in signing the mayor's climate protection agreement years ago, Kirkland made a long series of climate pledges, among them to, quote, "maintain healthy urban forests" and to promote tree planting. Preserving mature forests and reforestation are natural ways, really the only way to absorb carbon dioxide. Yet, in a few short years, Kirkland has actually lost tree canopy, even while annexing the plentifully forested Finn Hill and One A- One Eden neighborhoods, which allowed the city to reach a respectable forty percent tree canopy. Since we're falling behind on these goals, what will you do on the council to get back to that forty percent canopy? So Neil Black, you have one minute.
Uh thank you, Francesca. So this is uh work that the city has been um uh deeply involved in for a couple of years now. Um really taken a hard look at our tree code to determine whether it's sufficient to actually meet our uh goals for an uh forty percent canopy cover for our urban forest. One thing that's very, there's a couple of things that really come out of that work. And one of them is that we can't rely on um the tree canopy on uh single-family lots alone and and managing this on a lot-by-lot basis. So one of the things we're looking really hard at in connection with this effort is uh some tree banking um uh strategies that would, when trees are removed from a single-family lot that's undergoing redevelopment. And there uh the tree planting that could happen there is not going to be adequate, is really looking at ways that we can transfer that to public planting of trees so that we can tackle this both from a public property standpoint um and also from a private stuff property standpoint. If anybody has any questions about the chapter ninety-five revisions, please reach out to me. There's a lot to unpack in in this effort. Thanks.
Thanks so much. All right, uh Charisse Burgoyne, it's your turn. You have one minute.
All right. Well, densification of our tree planting in the area, I think, falls on both the owner of property and also our city to help kind of replant some of the old growth that is naturally coming down in our area. And I think we see as, you know, we go seasonally through that trees do come down. And I don't see many trees going back up point in case. And I know the um David E. Brink Park is being redone right now. But that willow tree was down for several years. So I think maybe we can get a little bit speedier with replanting trees that come down naturally or by car, unfortunately. Um it it's, we just got to plant trees. Get out there. Start planting.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Charisse. All right. So now we're we're up to uh question four. And for this, um we would ask John Pascal to answer the first question, uh followed by Jay Arnold. So this would be uh question four. Kirkland homes are unaffordable for many people, even those of moderate income. So how would you improve the city's inclusionary zoning and multifamily tax exemption programs to produce more deeply affordable homes? You have one minute, John Pascal.
All right. Thank you. I think housing affordability is obviously a really important topic that I feel the council has been uh focused on over the last few years with the Adoption Housing Strategy Plan. And I think it it requires a range of different things to provide that affordability. Um it's and it's not something that's just Kirkland, right? It's it's something that's across the region. I think I am really proud of the missing middle, the ADU regulations, residential suites, the smaller lots, the cottages, um everything TOD development that Mayor Sweet talked about. Uh those are really creative things. Workforce housing, we adopted that, working with Areté. Um I think we need to look at what other barriers there are, right? Um and it could be uh uh assisting in revenue or and or eliminating business license fees for those that offer affordable housing in their homes. Thank you.
You so much, John Pascal. Uh so now it's Jay Arnold's turn. You have the floor for a minute.
Okay. In addition to the things that uh John mentioned around uh missing middle housing, I think we have a real opportunity both in the eighty-fifth station area and as we look at neighborhood plans and redevelopment of our neighborhood centers. We do not have enough multifamily housing in Kirkland. And while I'm proud that Kirkland has the ten percent inclusionary zoning today, one of the first east side cities to do so, uh it's not going to be enough to uh provide the affordable housing at all areas that we're talking about. We recently um adopted targets, so we know exactly at different income levels, the housing that we need to generate. And part of that is going to be part of the eighty-fifth street station discussion, say, how we provide those incentives and in some cases, requirements to say, as we create value in the station area, here's what developers have to do in return. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Jay Arnold. Well, now for this next question, I'm going to pass this over to Joy Randall again. Uh thank you so much for all your wonderful answers. Appreciate it.
Hi there, everyone. Um thanks for being here. And thank you, Francesca. So question number five. Um first, Penny Sweet will answer, and then followed by Matthew Gelsor. Here's a question. The Kirkland City Council does not reflect the diversity of our current community. Council members have repeatedly said it's important to stay connected, and we need BIPOC to advise. How can connection and communication to communities of color be improved along with removing barriers to diversify the council itself? Finally, will you follow through with the hiring of a full-time DEI position? Penny Sweet, you have one minute.
Thank you, Joy. Um I'll I'll just start out with, absolutely, we are hiring a DEI professional. It it's high on our priority list and and we are moving forward with it. With regard to the approaches that we've taken to try to increase diversity in the city and on the city council, is we have actively solicited BIPOC communities to 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 join us on commissions, on boards, on committees. Uh we have reached out in multiple fashions to form focus groups around not just issues around racial equity, but in every single one of our boards and commissions. We were one of the first cities to incorporate youth members of our boards and commissions. Uh so I think we continue to make the attempt. We have revised our our strategies and and our last interview process, I think we interviewed over ninety candidates with a huge diverse field.
Thank you, Penny Sweet. Next is Matthew Gelsor. You have one minute to answer the same question.
Yeah, thank you. So this question really weighed heavily on me when I decided to run for council because I do not represent a different group of people, right? I look the same as everybody else on the council. Um I think the difference is that I do have um family in the BIPOC community. I've got friends in the BIPOC community. Um and I made it a I made it a decision from the outset in my campaign to reach out to members of the community that don't look like me and and don't have the same background that I have. Um I'd continue that same uh communication collaboration and really finding uh community champions to bring forward. Um speaking to uh Dr. Sandeep Shivani from um Yudha Bofal. And you know, really looking at that as um a way to reach out. He's been pushing for equity at the city level um and has and has hit resistance. He hasn't hit uh welcoming there. So I think finding ways to do that and really making sure that everybody who wants to participate has an opportunity to. Um that's a commitment I would make moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Appreciate it. Okay, question number six. Uh this will go to Charisse Burgoyne first to be answered and then followed by Neil Black. Here is a question. Compared to white people, black people are twenty times more likely to be subjected to Kirkland Police Department violence, eighteen times more likely to be reported in nine-one-one calls as unwanted subjects, and thirty-six times more likely to be treated by Kirkland Police as unwanted subjects. What suggestions do you have to improve the safety of black people in Kirkland from this biased treatment? Charisse, you can go first.
Well, I think KPD and the city, they have already started down a path of trying to correct that type of behavior from our patrol force. Um I do know that they are engaging more um community advocates on on their staffing, and so that will help create better communication. And education is going in. I know they're looking at getting body cameras just to help. So if there is an action taken, they can review the the data and actually make corrections in real time. So I think um to give them a little bit of grace while they figure out how to be more open in our community and less reactive to whatever call that they might get. Thank you.
Thank you, Charisse. Next, Neil Black. You have one minute.
Uh thank you, Joy. Um appreciate this question. And um this is not, this is extremely challenging um uh goal to accomplish, but we're doing that through um actively uh reaching out to the BIPOC community, um listening to what the BIPOC community needs, young um and old um families. And um really, this is not, you know, my phrase, but it's a phrase that we've we've we hear a lot and we've heard a lot, is not doing anything for us without us. And so really making sure the BIPOC community is engaged in uh these efforts. And so we're doing that in connection with the Community Safety Initiative that uh Charisse alluded to, which is a wide-ranging initiative um to address many of these issues. Uh we're working actively with the BIPOC community on those specific efforts around transparency, funding, uh accountability, and more.
Thank you so much, Neil. Hey, this is question number seven. First is going to be John Pascal to answer, and then after Jay Arnold. Here's the question. What do you believe is the greatest predictor of public safety? What ways will you help promote public safety that do not involve increasing police or expanding our criminal punishment system? John Pascal, you have one minute.
Thank you for the question. It's a big topic. It's something that's important and why I wanted to uh serve again for another four years is really to see the implementation of our community safety responders. Uh something where we're changing our practices to continue to provide and make a number one priority of public safety overall in the in the city, but change our practices to respond to the needs and be proactive about solving problems rather than being completely reactive. And that means really connecting folks to their social services, uh thinking about how we can do things differently. Do police need to respond to every call? Um how can we work with our emergency services providers in the region beyond police, uh medics, uh fire department to better serve our community, continue that public safety for the benefit of our residents, for our businesses, and for those who visit Kirkland? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, Jay Arnold, you have one minute.
Thank you. I think our response really needs to be about how we get the appropriate response to a problem when someone's calling in for help at the lightest footprint. And we're doing this through, as John described, our Community Responder Program, where we are going to have 24/7 mental health and social work professionals paired with an EMT to respond to these kind of issues in an appropriate way. In addition, we have established in partnership with the Kirkland Municipal Court and Judge John Olson, a community court that helps divert people from the criminal justice system and get them the resources that they that they need. The community court set of resources that's available for people before that is also available for the entire community. And I think that is going to, I think that sums up our our response towards how we get the appropriate response and ensure and in doing so, ensure public safety.
Thank you so much, Jay. Okay, question number eight, and we'll start with Matthew Gelscher and followed by Penny Sweet. And here's the question. What do reparations mean to you? And how does that connect to racial equity? What ideas do you have for reparations in Kirkland? Matthew, you have one minute.
Yeah, so in the news this morning, I read that Bruce's Beach actually was given back to the Bruce family, which is great. I don't know if anyone who's been following that, but fantastic to see that that the Manhattan Beach pushed that forward. I think that in the Pacific Northwest, we actually have a lot of discussion we need to have there related to displacement of the indigenous population related to what happened here during the during World War II. So as a community, we need to talk about that. We need to find ways to really dig into that. It's I think it's actually even more important than it is at the national scale because we have many more instances that that we've gone through in the Pacific Northwest. So fully in favor of having those discussions and finding ways. Personal wealth has been tied directly to homeownership and that's, you know, that's something that we need to to look into. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Next, Penny Sweet, you have one minute.
Thank you for that question. I think reparations is an issue that has come up, not just locally, but but it is such a national issue. And it's going to be a national discussion. I think we'll take it on at the state level. I think that we have opportunities to have these discussions among the cities across the region. I don't think it's going to be an easy solution, but I think it is something that we have to shine a light on. Terrible injustices have happened over the course of our history. And I feel like we have a moral responsibility to follow through and determine what we can do absolutely that will bring people on board in recognizing our responsibilities as a society. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, question number nine. And this will go to Sharice. We're going first and followed by Neil Black. The question is this, how would you address reports that black community members state they feel unwelcome shopping on Park Lane in downtown Kirkland? And what role does the business community have? Sharice, you have one minute.
Well, I would invite them to have a discussion about what made them feel unwelcome and uncomfortable while shopping on Park Lane. And I think business owners have the duty to keep your doors open to all that would walk through and want to do free market, you know, commerce within your four walls. I I would want to start with a conversation to see, you know, you know, seek to understand before I make any decisions on anything. I think a lot of times, things happen and people get flustered and they don't know how to seek resolution and just have a nice conversation about, hey, that hurt my feelings. And this is maybe how you could do it differently next time. And I think if we start having small conversations like that, things wouldn't grow to be so big. So I think to maybe invite them to have a conversation, start there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Neil Black, you're up next. You have one minute.
Thank you, Joy. So it certainly starts with listening. It's you, we we have to talk to families who have kids who go into our shops, Kirkland, let's say Park Lane, don't feel comfortable. We need to understand what those children and adults, what their experience is really like, and the conversations that they have at home about those experiences so that we can really understand what the issues are. Certainly, we, you know, I've had those had some of those conversations. We've had many conversations as a city, but what I really want to emphasize is it's one thing for us to to proactively reach out and have those conversations and to listen. I think we need to raise the level of discourse by our city leaders across the board. I think and this is incumbent upon all of us. I think we're doing a good job of that, but we, you know, we must do better. All anyone who's elected leader in City of Kirkland needs to be talking about these issues and talking openly about these issues and making sure that members of our community understand it's a priority for our community, that safe, inclusive, and welcoming isn't just a maxim, but it's actually how we live and what we expect from everyone among us and all of our neighbors. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Neil. I'm going to pass it to Francesca now for to start the lightning round.
Okay, thank you, everybody for participating in this. And this will try to amp up the energy a little bit here. We have a series of questions where you will just put out, put out your yes or no paddles. So let's go.
Francesca, before you get started, if I could ask attendees to make sure that they are in gallery view. That way you're seeing all of the candidates at the same time and can see their responses. Thank you.
Okay, so just get ready to to hold up your yes or no signs to answer these questions. So number one, do you agree there's a climate crisis? Great. Are you committed to a 50% reduction in Kirkland's greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 and 80% by 2050? Okay. All right, three, children living in homes with natural gas have significantly higher risk in developing asthma and heart disease, especially in vulnerable populations. Will you pledge to prohibit the use of gas in new affordable housing? Thank you. All right. Do you support the hiring of a sustainability manager? Okay. Do you support a property tax levy to fund affordable housing? Okay, no's, do we have no's? Okay. Do you support inclusionary zoning to allow more creative density and housing options in Kirkland? And thank you. Do you support removal of SROs, police, from Kirkland schools? Okay. Do masks help prevent the spread of COVID? Any no's? Okay. Do you support the continuation of the Houghton Community Council? Okay. Have you voted in every election in the past five years? Okay, thanks. Do you support the hiring of a DEI staff member? Thanks. Do you think mental health professionals should respond to mental health or behavioral health crises calls without the police? No. Okay. Do you support reparations in Kirkland? Okay. Do you support the inclusion of abortion access in the city's state legislative agenda? Yes or no? Okay, thanks. And finally, do you support the inclusion of gun safety in the city's state legislative agenda? Okay, thank you. So that's the end of our lightning round. Thank you so much for participating.
So we're going to do some follow up here and wonderful, we have plenty of time. This is this has been some great information from our candidates. We are going to look to see if there's any questions from the audience. So why don't we take a look there to see if we have any particular questions from the audience that are coming up? Okay, I would, I would love to get a little bit of follow up from the candidates. If Francesca, if you're open to that as well, we could provide each of you one minute for sort of final conclusions and anything that you didn't have time to include. So we can open that up and call on each candidate to have one minute each. Are you okay with that, Francesca?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay. If there are any particular questions that you felt that they didn't really answer, Francesca, we can also do that. I I would like to expand, Jay, and I think it was John. You did talk a little bit about public safety and it seemed to me it was definitely more of focused on response. And I guess my question is this for Jay, John, and I'll let the others jump into this. In regards to safety for a community, do you feel that that is only based on a reaction or response, or do you feel that safety for a community is ensuring that people have enough to thrive instead of just survive? As far as fueling community programs, as far as providing adequate healthcare and food and shelter for people, instead of just reacting to situations that come up, how can we dig deeper and take a few steps back instead of just reacting? So John, why don't you go ahead and start?
It's a it's a good question. Safety, I think, is kind of, in my mind, is kind of incorporated in everything we do, whether it's transportation, making sure that we're providing safe facilities for people to get around, especially those that don't want to own a car. Whether it's regulations in our buildings to provide for for safety in in terms of how we construct and and build within our city. It's 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 trying to be proactive. And I think that I think we've made a lot of progress with the community court in our courts. And so it's not just all about police, but we had a minute to respond. And so we focused on on some of the things that we're doing, I think, that are really changing our police response. But I think safety is something that you absolutely look at. I think everything that we do operational wise and and every capital investment.
Thank you so much. Jay, can you expand a little bit more on your initial answer too?
Sure, absolutely. One is that we want everyone in Kirkland that lives here, visits here to feel safe and feel like that they belong. And I think that's a lot of the work under Reverend referendum 5434 and work in the community, both with city operations and beyond. I think we do need to continue to invest in people in need. And we have a city council work plan item to build a or to for a homeless, a permanent supportive facility with with resources for people that are homeless. And I think we've learned a lot during COVID about the money that we've invested and organizations we've partnered with for people in need. And I think that will guide future increased investments by the city.
Thank you, Jay. So I'm going to open that up for any of the other candidates to if you would like to talk about public safety and you'll have one minute. I see Penny Sweet, go ahead.
Thanks, Joy. I think it goes beyond, at least the way that you seem to describe it in in your question, it goes, it does go beyond public safety in terms of fire police and the rest of it. It's it's really part of a cultural norm for us in terms of the quality of life. You know, people need to have a good job. They need to have have safe areas to to play in, to grow up in. They need, they need adequate access to to food networks. They need adequate access to education. We work with our with our school system around making sure that we provide that. But it's very holistic. And I think that is a level, at least that's what I intuited from your from your question in terms of what it was that you were looking for.
Thank you so much. If anyone else doesn't have any follow up on that, I see Neil, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing, you know, one of the most important things we do as city council members is land use and planning. It's not the only thing we do, certainly, but it's one of the biggest things to do. And when we it really looking at the land use and zoning decisions that we make through an inclusivity lens, it's really important that we, again, I mentioned at the top, that we're listening and hearing from the people we hear regularly, but we also are listening to the people that we hear from very rarely. And when we, when we can, if we can build sustainable, if we can encourage the development of sustainable neighborhood centers, then we're also encouraging inclusive neighborhood centers. And that inclusivity having having our community reflect the greater diversity of our region is super important. And that has to be part of our discourse every time we're talking about important land use and zoning decisions.
Thank you so much. Any other of the candidates that would like to add into anything? We do see a question. Oh, Francesca, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I wanted to throw in a climate question because it seemed as though everyone who spoke about the sustainability master plan was in favor of it. And, you know, it aims to do a lot of important things, including measuring carbon dioxide and disclosing what those emissions are. So I wanted to know if you all could could talk about what those carbon emissions are, if they've gone up or down, and if you would be in favor of paying for a sustainability manager and really actually add allocating money in the budget for that sustainability master plan, which is not funded at present. So maybe, yeah, go ahead, Neil. That's fine.
Thank you. I'm going to jump in here real quick because I was having a lengthy conversation just last week with some of our advocates in the community around climate action. And I'm I'm going to go a little off topic here, but one of the things I left with them is just how important it is that we address our tax equity and reliability and sustainability and predictability in the state of Washington. Whenever, you know, as whenever I'm thinking about devoting taxpayer resources to a solution. Whenever I'm thinking about like the property tax question we had in the lightning round, am I open to taxing our taxpayers more to achieve an important goal? I'm always going to be thinking about the unfairness of our tax system. And whatever whatever these issues are, these issues that are important to us, whether it's equity and inclusivity, whether it's climate action, we also need to be taking that discussion to Olympia and giving them courage to address tax policy so that we can have a tax system that reflects our values as a people.
Thanks a lot, Neil. Well, getting back to the climate, can you all, can it, does anyone else have an answer for the greenhouse gas emissions that have that are happening in Kirkland? If they've gone up or down, if the sustainability master plan should have funding to do all the things that it that it pledges to do? Jay, do you want to tackle that?
I think John had it ahead of me.
Just one minute for this.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead. Two things on that, we do track greenhouse gas emissions. And we had a report recently in twenty twenty on this, which said that we were kind of flat on them, which is good and bad. It means with a significant growth that we had, we have broken the per capita number, but we didn't, are, are not on track to make our twenty thirty goals. Throughout the county, there will be numbers coming out on a per city basis through the King County City's climate collaboration that will give us some opportunity to, to respond. And then finally, I think the the discussions on funding a sustainability position will be part of our mid biennium budget process later this year. Because things were not as bad as we had feared through COVID right now, where we thought we might have been.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody, John, did you, John Pascal, do you want to tackle that question?
Sure, thanks. I mean, I think the difficulty, I think, as we all know with yes or no questions is we, we have to balance things. So I want everything, but I can't have it all, right? And, and so it becomes a priority. And so what I've told folks about the sustainability manager position is my first priority, to be honest, is to fund our transportation planner position. It's a temporary position. It has been for many years. And that's perhaps a real, that's a really important position to achieve our sustainability and our climate goals. If we don't have someone planning on what we're doing and how we're achieving and how we're reducing our reliance on, on our automobiles, then, you know, it's going to be very, very difficult to ever achieve what we want to in our sustainability master plan.
Okay, thank you, John.
Matthew has his hand up.
Matthew, go ahead. You have one minute. Thank you.
Yeah, so it, it, this is a really interesting topic. I am a signatory to the A A twenty-three commitment, which is a commitment to specifically track greenhouse emissions, carbon water usage in our built infrastructure. We are nowhere near where we need to be as a society to get to where we need to be by twenty thirty. It's just the reality of it. It's going to take some serious commitments. We're going to have to make some difficult decisions to John's point. Transportation may be a first place to invest the money. But that alone is not going to get us there. We have to look at how we build. We have to look at how we zone. We have to look at how we can create a true, again, it's ten minute community, fifteen minute community, different terms are used. But we have to find ways to provide a work, live, play environment in Kirkland to encourage people to stay in Kirkland and stay off the roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
So there is a question in the chat. If we can move on to that, because we are starting to close in on our end time here. And the anonymous question is, when it comes to the ethnic and racial diversity lacking in the council for the various reasons it exists, would you be open to building a committee that provides a variety perspectives to help inform council decisions? How about we turf this to Sharice Burgoyne since we'd love to hear from you on that?
I think that would be a good idea. I think all, all ideas are welcome at the table. And I think we have, as a society, always invited people to the table to do things the way that they've always been done. And that, I think, kind of perpetuates a lot of the challenges that we see now. And so if we invite people to the table to actually hear where they're actually coming from and how they see it could be changed, you know, as a small business owner, when there's a challenge, I, I go to the, the person that's having the challenge to see how they would want it fixed. Because usually the person that has the problem always has the best solution to it. So if we invite those that feel like they can help to make the change better, reflect how they want to go forward, I think I'm all for it. Let's, let's have a council. It always starts with communication. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'd like to offer all of you concluding statements, concluding time that each of you can have. And we will do thirty seconds for each of you. So why don't we go ahead and start with Matthew Gelsner?
Thank you, appreciate it. You know, so really Kirkland's an amazing place. I, I think that we all agree with that. It's just a matter at this point of finding the proper alignment between what the community needs and to Neil's point, the community that we don't hear from, right? And my commitment to everybody in Kirkland is that my position on the council will be used to listen to people, to elevate people's voices and to work with the community to solve the real issues in front of the community. I appreciate everybody's participation today and look forward to working and serving the people of Kirkland moving forward. Thank you.
Let's go to Neil Black.
Hey, Joy, I just want to thank everyone who is attending this today or who's going to be listening to this over the next couple of days for your engagement and your strong interest in the future of Kirkland. It's an honor, really a privilege to serve the people of Kirkland on the council. And I would love to have your support for another four years. Thank you very much.
Penny Sweet?
muted. That unmute button doesn't want to come undone. I, I, I just want to follow up with, thank you, as Neil did. This has been a really amazing opportunity. Was really glad to hear from the school district candidates as well. Indivisible is demonstrating tonight how how unique and diverse our community can be. And I think you've done a great job of, of course, the last two, actually four years of raising these questions and shining a light on issues that are very important to Kirkland.
Sharice?
Just like everyone, thank you for inviting me to this forum tonight. It's always fun and a little nerve wracking to come and speak with everyone. But I am hopeful to lead with honesty, integrity and compassion in having all of these really great conversations with our community members. And I humbly ask for your vote for seat five on Kirkland City Council. I look forward to representing you these next four years. Thank you.
John, how about you go next?
Great, thanks. Well, really good questions. I, I would really love to dig deeper on, on many of those. Any chance I talk with anyone about those? But overall, just excited to continue to work with all of you listening, problem solving, many important issues before us as, as we've discussed. Want to help shape those outcomes and want to ensure that we continue to be open and transparent about our decisions and be responsive to you all and, and reach out to those that we're not hearing from. So thanks again for the opportunity.
And Jay?
Thank you for the opportunity to participate today. And thank you to indivisible Kirkland for your involvement in making Kirkland a better place. The biggest compliment I've received as a council, council member was from a constituent who said they disagreed with me, but trusted me to listen and incorporate their feedback. And as we're talking about these really complex issues and timing and how do we move faster and how do we do more? I've got a strong track record of listening, bringing people together and finding creative solutions. I'd be honored to have your vote to continue this work and would love to continue some of these discussions offline.
Okay, I'll pass it to Heather for our conclusion.
Thank you all.
Hey, everybody. Thanks to all of you who have stuck around. I really want to thank our amazing moderators, Emma, Francesca and Joy. You guys have been a joy to work with and we consider ourselves very fortunate that we're all on the same team. We also want to thank the candidates and representative for being here, for wanting to share your thoughts about the future of our community. And thanks to everyone who attended today. We really appreciate you making this a worthwhile event. We've been dropping chats, I mean, links into the chat all over the place. And I saw the chat moderator say shameless plug for indivisible Kirkland. But if you'd like to learn more about what we do, or if you would like to take part in the community actions related to equity and racial justice, please sign up for our newsletter. Join our Facebook group. Yeah, there are any number of different ways to communicate with us and get involved in the work that we do. We're an all volunteer organization. So any support that you can provide would be greatly appreciated. As far as ballots, you will be received, the ballots will be mailed out on Wednesday. Please keep an eye out for them and vote early. It makes a difference. If you still have questions about who, what candidates you might want to vote for, please check out the Fuse Washington Progressive Voter Guide for additional information. And yeah, so sign up for our information and we'll keep you posted on what's going on in local politics and what you can do to advocate for change within the community. And with that, I don't think that I've left anything out. We will be sticking around for a few minutes. So if anybody wants to stick around and chat or ask a question of us, please feel free to do so. And I think that that is it. Have I missed anything, anyone? Okay, well then, with that, thank you all for being here. Thank you for doing what you do for the community. And we're really happy to be part of the Kirkland community. Thank you all so much. Have a good afternoon.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, thank you.
Did everybody leave?
No, we still have.